Welcome to the recent decision made in March 5th, 2014. Please all rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Jason Joseph, 4th grader at Margate Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Mayor of Fort Lauderdale, Charlotte Rodstrom. All right, Student of the Month, Commissioner Talariqo.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We have our Student of the Month, and our gifts are listed up there, their names, so whoever contributes to these happiness we have, try to give them some of your business, because they really do a good job of providing some nice gifts for the students. Okay, First Student of the Month, Gabriela Bustamante. Seventh grade, Abundant Life Christian Academy. So bring all of your fans up. Parents, friends, relations. Come on over here. You come over here, because you have some work to do. I want you to tell all these nice people who these nice people are.
So this is my dad, Adrian Bustamante. This is my sister Bianca, my mom Carla, my teacher, my science teacher, Miss Camacho, my history teacher, Miss Hanover, and my principal is Angela.
Gabriela Gabby, that's your nickname is Gabby. Gabby was selected as Student of the Month because she gives her best and strives for excellence in all she does. She is an A student and a role model to her peers. She is also involved in many after-school activities, including choir, drama, volleyball, and more. Gabby volunteers around the school in his Houghwood School Choice Week, the City of Coral Springs Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration, and Junior Achievement Activities. She always has a smile on her face and is polite and friendly to everyone. Is that right? Yes? Oh, okay. Okay, her teacher would describe her as a naturally gifted and a hard-working student. Abundant Life Christian Academy is honored to have Gabby as their Student of the Month. What can we give you is a nice Margate pin to wear with pride. And a plaque to Gabriela Bustamante for your outstanding efforts at Abundant Life Christian Academy Student Recognition, signed by Mayor Pearman, Vice Mayor Simone, Commissioner Donahue, Commissioner Rosano, and Commissioner Talariqo. That's for you. And we have some things that are listed up there, but we have a nice water bottle. You like water? That's from the Water Department. These are Department of Environmental Engineering Service. I get it right? And we have two passes, not one, but two, donated from the City Commission. Okay, we have a, oh, wait a minute, there's one. And a flashlight at Margate City Commission that works, actually works. Other than that, anybody?
Somebody's sitting right here, though, but these are.
And another pass. Oh, and a badge, when you drive, you can wear that. Oh, boy, this is, from Dees again, you have the story of drinking water and eco-friendly local. A post-it note, and two more pencils. Do you use pencils or pens? Good, good answer. And from Margate Student Rules of Margate City Commission, you have a calculator and a ruler, all built into one. A pen, City of Margate. Who's this from? The Commission, okay. We want you to write, write letters telling how good a job we're doing. And this, this really works well. I got one of these for my grandchild's backpack. You can walk in and buy yourself, yes, light. This, this is a nice gift here from the firefighters. Margate Fire Rescue. And two daily passes to Calypso Coke. I guess they're good when the weather's a little warmer, right? And you have two wristbands from the Chamber of Commerce for their carnival, unlimited carnival tickets for the ride. Use it from midnight till 4:00 a.m. Oh, the bags, right? The bags from Public Works, use your bags. How you doing? Good, all right. Come on over here, let everybody see you here. Now, you know all these people? Good.
This is my dad, Varma. This is my mom, Charley. This is my brother, Adrian. This is my sister DeeDee. This is my teacher, Isra. And this is my principal, Miss Tom Meister.
Wow, it's really kindergarten, that's pretty good. And you look like this. It says Varma is a serious student. You look very serious. That works hard in class. He can always be found attentive and on task during lessons. Although he excels academically, that is not what stands out most about Varma. He is one of the sweetest young men you will ever encounter. He is kind, compassionate, selfless, patient, understanding, and thoughtful. Although he is shy and quiet, he has a demeanor that shines through as a leader and peacemaker in school. Varma knows when a classmate is in need of a friend and steps up to the plate, he has a special gift for helping his friends. You can be sure that if a person is playing alone, Varma will find a way to include them in whatever game he is playing. Atlantic West Elementary is full of excellent young learners, but Varma stands out above most and brings a sense of family to his class. Very nice. And your plaque, Certificate of Recognition to Varun Varma, Outstanding Efforts, Atlantic West Elementary, signed by the Mayor and City Commissioners. And I'm not going through this all. You know what's sitting here? Huh? Were you paying attention before? What?
I smell.
That's right, lots of them, right? Do you like pencils? They have a eraser. And your backpack has all these goodies, and they're all listed up there, right? And this is, remember the carnival tickets? You like to go on rides at the carnival? You can get two unlimited carnival tickets. Pretty good. From the Chamber of Commerce. Very good. Okay. Smile, Varma, that's why you're very serious. Okay, 4th grade, Hebrew Academy Community School, Rifka Levit...
Levitin.
Levitin, Levitin. There's no E in there. It says El. Hi, come on over here. See what that says? What does that say? Well, El, it doesn't have an E. Okay, 4th grade, Hebrew Academy. Rifka is an organized and studious young girl. She is, oh, I forgot, didn't introduce these people, I'm sorry. Come on over here.
This is my father, and this is my mother. This is my sister Musia, my sister Rocco, my sister Merrill. This is my principal, Mrs. Rose, and my teacher, my sister Ma.
Great. You want a little boy, right? Gotta have a boy. All right, Rifka is an organized and studious young girl. She is respectful to her teachers and her classmates. Rifka is very responsible with her work habits in school. She goes above and beyond what is expected academically and socially in her classes. Rifka excels at every 4th grade subject and is always willing to lend a hand to another student who might need help in her class. Rifka's positive attitude makes her a role model to the other girls in her classes. She is an asset to her school and Hebrew Academy Community School. It's pleased and honored to have Rifka as their Student of the Month. Congratulations. She'll share with you. You like pencils? All right, City of Margie, Certificate of Recognition to Rifka Levitan for your outstanding efforts, Hebrew Academy Community School, signed by Mayor Pearman, the Vice Mayor, Brian Simone, Commissioner Rosano, Commissioner Donahue, Commissioner Talariqo. That is for you. And, oh, it's up there. All those things that are on that are for you. And I know what this is, right? Carnival ride. The wristbands, two unlimited carnival tickets. You like carnival, you like rides? Good, have a good time. Next. Kindergarten, Carson Coe. Carson?
Cho.
Cho. What does it say there? Carson what? Coe. That's right, you're right. Cho. Everybody's coming up here, huh? Good. My loose napkin, Ar. Who else? Going twice. Boy, you got your work, and I'm for you. Come over here. Now, you don't, do you know all these people? Give us your best shot. Come on, start over here.
That's Mama, that's Grandma, that's Grandma, Granny, Papa Roger, Papa, Anna, Miss Austin, Miss Ruben.
They're all here supporting you. Who's the firefighter? Mom's the firefighter, right? They recognize you without you, you know. Okay, Carson is being recognized because he truly exhibits all of the character traits of a Liberty Star student. Carson is kind, honest, fair, responsible, and safe. He is respectful of his classmates and all adults that he interacts with. Carson is always a helper to his friends in need, and he exhibits excellent social skills. Liberty Elementary is proud of Carson as their Student of the Month. Remembered all those names, you should get back to the pen. Okay, Carson Cho, right? Okay, for your outstanding efforts, Liberty Elementary Student Recognition, signed by the Mayor and the City Commissioners. That's for you. And we've got a package here with all kinds of great gifts. And, do you even have a, do you have a fire rescue shirt at home? You got one now. You can wear it with office or uniform, or you can put your shirt on. All right, you got two unlimited carnival tickets. Two. How many do you need? Good answer. Stacy. Hey, Stacy, come on over here. Stacy's in the kindergarten, Margie, introduce all these.
Mom, brother, sister, sister.
Have to do a little better here. What's, what's your brother's name? And what's your sister's? And your teacher's?
This is Melissa.
And your principal?
This is Jean.
All right, Stacy is an amazing little girl. She enters her classroom each morning with the brightest smile across her face. Stacy shows eagerness to learn every day. She is so kind, loving, and helpful to her classmates and teacher. Stacy is reading on first grade level, writing short stories, and excelling in math, social studies, and science. In kindergarten, they do that? Wow. She is responsible, honest, trustworthy, and caring. Stacy is a role model and natural-born leader. Margate Elementary is honored to have Stacy as their Student of the Month, and they look forward to watching her academic accomplishments throughout the years. Good girl. All right. Your plaque to Stacy Luce, Outstanding Efforts, Margate Elementary, signed by the Mayor and the City Commissioner. And your bag from all our departments and the Commission. Let me get that. And do you like carnival rides? Have a good time, okay? Coming up soon. Enjoy yourself. Stacy.
I am fourteen years old.
All right, and those are all these nice people.
So right here is my mom, Givens, and to the left of her is my teacher, Miss Perry. And then next to Miss Barris is the eighth grade, is my eighth grade principal, and Ms. Rose Hill.
Good, okay. All right. Abigail is an outstanding student and exceptionally qualified to represent Margie Middle. She is a hard worker who is involved in many close and school activities. She thrives on competition and always does things to the best of her ability. Abigail has maintained straight A's throughout her three years in middle school. Pretty good. At this time, she has enrolled in two high school courses. As a young adult, Abigail has left an indelible mark among her teachers, who expect great things in her future. Margie Middle School is proud to honor Abigail as their Student of the Month. Congratulations. And a plaque to Abigail Simpson Givens for your outstanding efforts, Margie Middle Student Recognition, signed by the Mayor and the Commissioners. And I'm sure you're gonna wear this to school, right? Really? And do you like carnival rides? All right, there's two. Okay? Take your boyfriend. Okay. Kaylee, are you here?
Yes.
Come on down. 5th grade, Rise Academy School of Science and Technology. Come on over here. Come on, move your back. He's gonna hurt you.
This is my mom, Kitty. This is my brother, Samuel. And this is my beloved teacher, Miss Abigail. And my beloved Vice Principal and Principal, Miss Smith and Miss Perry.
Wow. If I were to talk to my teachers like that, I probably would've got better grades. Remember that. Okay, Kaylee shows exemplary academic effort each and every day. She is not only an outstanding student, but an outstanding citizen as well. Kaylee is what every teacher wants in a student. Whatever she does, she fully commits to it. Rise Academy is proud to recognize Kaylee as their Student of the Month. Congratulations. And from the city, your plaque to Kaylee Reese for your outstanding efforts, Rise Academy School of Science and Technology, signed by the Mayor and the City Commissioners. Yay. It's the first yay we've had. And there's your backpack of all those goodies. And special gift from the Margie Chamber of Commerce, two tickets to the carnival. So enjoy yourself. Brother Samuel, you have a cake, right?
And that carnival starts on March 21st and goes to March 30th, guys. Student of the Month, Vice Mayor Simone.
It's always a pleasure to see you here again and to give out these awards to our wonderful teachers that we have in the city and also to the students. Our First Teacher of the Month is Dawn Farrell, PE coach from Abundant Life Christian Academy. I believe he was absent last month, so we're honoring him this month. Dawn Farrell has served as the Athletic Director at Abundant Life for 12 years. During that time, he has built a program that offers elementary and middle school soccer, boys' and girls' basketball, girls' volleyball, baseball, softball, track, and intramural sports for the lower elementary students. Additionally, he teaches physical education to all of the male students in 4th grade through 8th grade. Dawn encourages students to pursue excellence and push for greatness. He is a role model of good citizenship and character for all students. It's an honor for Abundant Life Christian Academy to have Dawn Farrell as their Teacher of the Month.
I have some of my colleagues and one of my students. I have Mrs. Camacho, who is a science teacher at the school. I have Gabby, who was just awarded the Student of the Month. I have Miss Hanover, who is our history teacher, and my principal is Miss Angela, Stacy Andrew.
And Dawn, we have a city pin for you. And a certificate of recognition to Dawn Farrell for your outstanding efforts at Abundant Life Christian Academy Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, Lisa Pearman, Brian Simone, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Miss Brian Donahue, Tommy Rosano, and Frankie Tullinger. Congratulations. And we have your good bag. I hope you like water as well, in all your athletic endeavors. And we have a keychain for you from the City Commissioner. Some pencils. Some more pencils. One more. There you go. A Margate Recycles notepad. A calculator. A City of Margie keychain. And from Public Works, an insulated lunch bag. A bookmark. And two Calypso Coke daily passes. And the bag from, from Dees. And we also have $10 Walmart gift card and a free round of mini golf coupons.
You guys may go stay there.
And for our next Teacher of the Month, we have Loretta Camacho, Middle School Science, Abundant Life Christian Academy. Mrs. Camacho is in her eighth year of service as a middle school science teacher. Additionally, she is a 6th grade homeroom teacher. According to Gabby Bustamante, "Science is fun because Mrs. Camacho does lots of experiments and has a witty sense of humor." When we need help, she is ready to assist students. She is a great teacher. Abundant Life Christian Academy is proud to nominate Mrs. Loretta Camacho as her Teacher of the Month. Congratulations. And we have a city of Margate pin for you. And your certificate of recognition. Oh, wrong one. To Mrs. Camacho for your outstanding efforts at Abundant Life Christian Academy, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. Congratulations. And who do you have with you today?
My sister Mercedes, my girlfriend Martin, my student Gabby, my colleague Laura Henneberg, Middle School Social Studies, and Coach Farrell, and my principal Stacy Infield.
And we have your goodie bag as well. And two unlimited carnival tickets for you as well. And our next teacher, from Atlantic West Elementary, kindergarten, Melanie Furland. Melanie is exactly the type of teacher everyone wants for their child. She is devoted to each child in her classroom and keeps up with her former students. She cares for each child in her class as if they were her own. Mrs. Furland is creative in her instruction and a master of motivating students. Always the optimist, she sees the best in all situations and students. Her children celebrate their learning in her class in many ways, but everyone's favorite is the Smarty Pants Dance. Mrs. Furland also co-facilitates the staff sunshine committee, sharing her smile and thoughtfulness with her fellow teachers. Atlantic West thinks Mrs. Furland is awesome and is honored to have her as her Teacher of the Month. Do we get to see that dance?
Yes.
And we have your city pin and your certificate of recognition to Mrs. Furland for your outstanding efforts at Atlantic West Elementary, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. And we have your goodie bag as well as two unlimited carnival tickets for you from the Chamber of Commerce as well. Our next Teacher of the Month, 4th grade from Hebrew Academy Community School, Lo Ra Ayah Mushka Schusterman. Lo Ra Schusterman's 4th grade girls never want to miss her class, regardless of what they are studying. She brings her curriculum to life in an exciting, exceptional way. Just as important, Mrs. Schusterman instills essential character skills for her students in a fun, productive way. Each week, one girl in her class earns the title of Malta, Queen of a Class. The student who is chosen as Malta is required to cooperate with others, participate every day, do her homework kindly, and have a good attitude. Most importantly, each girl must show kindness and courtesy to her teacher and classmates in order to qualify as Malta. While many 4th grade girls begin to have issues with queen bees and wannabes, Mrs. Schusterman's students work to attain the sort of character qualities that a person given the title of queen should have and those that Hebrew Academy works to exemplify. Congratulations to Mrs. Schusterman for her outstanding classroom management and life lessons to the young ladies who are her students. And we have your city pin as well and your certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts at Hebrew Academy, Community School, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. And who do you have with you today?
I have my husband. And my husband and my Schusterman, I'm with our Schusterman. My dear students, beautiful Leavitton, and our Principal, excellent Principal, Ms. Riz.
And we have your goodie bag for you as well and two unlimited carnival tickets from the Chamber of Commerce as well. Our next Teacher of the Month, Jody Hobbs, kindergarten, Liberty Elementary. Mrs. Hobbs has been teaching for seven years, five of those years at Liberty Elementary School. She is currently the team leader as well as the Chair of the School Sunshine Club. Mrs. Hobbs is very detail-oriented, organized, and always there to help her teammates. She loves her job and works hard to make learning fun. Liberty Elementary is proud to have Mrs. Hobbs as her Teacher of the Month. And we have your city pin and your certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts at Liberty Elementary, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. And your goodie bag as well as two unlimited carnival tickets from the Chamber of Commerce as well. Does the teacher make learning fun? She looks like it. Our next teacher to be recognized, from kindergarten at Margate Elementary, Christina Swanson. Mrs. Swanson strives to achieve the knowledge to prepare her students in becoming the most creative and innovative learners possible. She feels her responsibility as a teacher is to stimulate and enhance her students' intellectual development and personal growth. She believes children must be actively involved in the learning process. Thus, through the use of visual models and challenging activities, her children are expected, are excited, and challenged. In Mrs. Swanson's classroom, her students will experience new ideas and be involved in cooperative learning. She will guide her students so that they may grow towards the development of their own independence. The Margate Elementary family would like to congratulate Mrs. Swanson for being their Outstanding Teacher of the Month. And we have city pin for you. And a certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts at Margate Elementary, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. And your goodie bag and two carnival tickets as well. Our next Teacher of the Month is Laura Bears, 8th grade, Margate Middle School. And I'm going to let Abigail, if you could read what she wrote about your teacher, please.
She brightens the room with her luminous smile, making sure every student is welcomed into her class. When love is given on to her, she gives back 200%. She adores her family and sees to their every need. Only one teacher fits this description in my eyes, and that is Mrs. Laura Bears, 8th grade teacher of the Seminoles team. When a student is in distress, he or she finds comfort in talking to Mrs. Bears as she alleviates their stress. I nominate Ms. Bears as the Teacher of Integrity, and I appreciate her loyalty to the students of Margate Middle School.
What an honor. There is your city pin and your certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts at Margate Elementary, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. I'm sorry, Margate Middle. And your goodie bag and two unlimited carnival tickets for you as well. Our next Teacher of the Month is Danielle Gaspar. Danielle Gaspar is very passionate about her students' education and their pride to succeed. As her middle school science teacher and chair, Mrs. Gaspar is in constant communication with parents and her peers. Her number one agenda is that every party is held accountable for the success of the individual student. In addition to her academic excellence, Mrs. Gaspar co-chairs the school's science club and was very instrumental in the students meeting the timeline for submitting their projects to the Broward County Schools' Science Fair. It is with great pleasure that Rise Academy recognizes Mrs. Gaspar as her Teacher of the Month. And we have your city pin and your certificate of recognition for your outstanding efforts at Rise Academy School of Science and Technology, Teacher Recognition, signed by the Mayor, the Vice Mayor, and the Commissioners. And who do you have with you here today?
I have my wonderful students, Samuel, Rissis, 7th grader. My husband, my very supportive family, my husband Alex, and my daughters, Castor and Chloe. My colleague, Ms. Abington. My wonderful Principal, Mrs. Smith. And my wonderful, a wonderful guidance counselor, Ms. Gare.
And we have your goodie bag and two unlimited carnival tickets from the Chamber of Commerce as well.
If you'll just give me one minute, then I'll release y'all to go home and do your homework, but we're going to read a proclamation first. Karen, please come. It's especially, it's especially honored for us to do this tonight, seeing as this is the first time in Margate's history that we've had a mayor and a vice mayor that have been women. So I made Vice Mayor Smol stand down here with me. I won't make her do the whereas. We are actually honoring women's every month. Proclamation. Whereas, women have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of the state, county, and municipal in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life by cons... You guys need to do me. Constituting, doesn't look like constituting. A significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of our volunteer labor force and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions. And, this is heavy. Whereas, women of every race... Thank you. Women of every race, class, and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive movement to improve society. And whereas, women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolish... Jeez, come on, guys. Abolishment movement and the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, the environmental justice movement, and other social justice campaigns, especially the peace movement, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literary... in literature and in teaching and study of history; and whereas, in recognition of the contributions of women, Congress has passed a resolution each year since 1987 designating the month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas, the theme of Women's History Month in 2014 is celebrating women of character, courage, and commitment, and the month of March presents special opportunities to celebrate the wisdom and tenacity of generations of women who have come before us and those who will follow, and to acknowledge the courage, determination, and steadfast needed to move history forward. Now, therefore, I, Lisa Pierman, Mayor of the City of Margate, do hereby proclaim this month of March 2014 as Women's History Month in the City of Margate, and call upon all residents to observe this by participating in programs, ceremonies, and activities to foster an awareness and the appreciation for the contributions made by women which have benefited and improved society. In witness where I am here unto set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Margate to be affixed to the 5th day of March 2014, Lisa Pierman, Mayor, Vice Mayor Joanne Simone, Commissioner Brian Donahue, Commissioner Tommy Rosano, Commissioner Frank B. Talarico... And you know, if I would have wrote it, I would have just said, "Women rock." So Karen Diaz is our director over at the Northwest Vocal Center, so we present this to you for all the work that you do too. Thank you.
I'm very honored to accept the proclamation for Women's History of the Month, celebrating in 1914, the character, courage, and commitment of all women.
Smile. We're going to take about a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back for our regular meetings, so you guys will have homework to do. You can just get out. Commissioner Talarico has to go home and do his homework. We'll be back in about a minute.
We're going to have to move this. Move, move. The trucks are in the way. I think what's happening is treatment. Still a nice sign. We're going to have to take care of it. Well, we have to call through. Oh, no, that's not, that's not. Chuck off. Decent, decent.
Never configure this down. What?
To get my good sign. Okay, we're back. Commission comments, Commissioner Talarico.
Just, uh, lettering with state, the crowd. No, nothing. Just welcome, Mr. Smith.
Commissioner Donahue.
Good evening. If you've got a chance to go to the Margate, uh, City of Margate website, it's do-it-in-proof and really nice, and you can see things like the movies that we have on Saturday once a month. So we just had our first movie with our beautiful inflatable gigantic screen, and it was a beautiful night, uh, movie. And the thing is, I was really happy to see so many Margate residents come out and enjoy the night and see what community looks like. Also, kind of cool in the background to see the kids running around and having fun, and it was family night out, and it was nice to see. We have the next one coming up, and it'll be an Academy Award winner, Frozen, and that's coming up next month. So if you get a chance to go out to one of our movies that are free, I do believe we really are going to have popcorn for the next one. It's fun, and it is nice to see community get together. We also have the Sound Sundown coming up, and that's a big hit with people. We have the carnival coming up. You can see all these things on the website, or the, I'm sure we'll hear from the Chamber of Commerce about the carnival. And don't forget St. Patty's Day is coming up very soon. We do have the St. Patty's Day parade, so wear your green and come on out and celebrate. And if you want to get involved in helping out in any of these things that are going on in our city, we invite you to participate. We have the volunteer program. You can contact us through email with volunteer@margatefl.com, and get involved and have some fun in your city. So I welcome you all to join. Thanks.
Commissioner Rosado.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. First, I would like to say, uh, we thank everybody for their donations. I think it's very generous, uh, for what everybody does for the stadium, especially the chamber. And by the way, Lee, I got your letter in the mail for the, uh, the donation for the businesses, and I thought it was great. I mean, I've been a business owner for, I don't even know how long in Margate, but it's the first time I ever received a letter like that, and I thought it was great that you're reaching out to the, uh, to businesses.
Thank the city clerk's office. They were very instrumental in writing it and putting it together and punching it up a little bit better than just sending out a word thing.
Yeah, nice job, and the whole office. Happy birthday to my wife. She's still with my son out there playing baseball, but happy birthday to her. Getting back to what you said about the, the new website, I think it's great. It's, uh, still got a couple of kinks in it. I'm noticing it says movie night on, uh, Friday or next Saturday at 7:00, and then you read below, and it says the movie starts at 8:00, so some just kind of worked to work out. And also the signs that are all around the city of the upcoming movie, those are great, but there's no time on it. I was down at the Margate Sports Complex on Saturday during the baseball games and had a dozen, about a dozen people ask me what time the movie is, luckily I was able to tell them, but there's no time on the, uh, the advertisement. Just one other thing, we had a workshop, we were talking about plaques for certificates. I just wonder when we're going to talk about that again, or...
You want to talk about it again, or do you want to just, I thought we kind of came up that we were going to do plaques for the rest of the year for everybody, yeah.
Oh, okay, I thought that was still on the board.
We'll just have to put it in our, in our line item budget, for then when budget time comes, that it's in the line item budget for them. We're also going to reach out to see if maybe we can get, uh, sponsors for plaques as well. Somebody wants to sponsor a plaque for that group.
Okay, um, that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Good evening. I'd like to thank Mike Jones and Austin Parks and Recreation Department for the great job in setting off our first movie in the park. The residents coming in were very excited about having it. It was a very good turnout, so I thank the residents for coming out and supporting us in this. Don't forget the senior games are coming March 10th to the 14th at 9:00. And we also have our garage sale coming on March 15th from 7:00 to 12:00 o'clock at Oriole Field. That's all.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll say thanks for the movie too. It was an enjoyable evening. It was a nice night. We had a, a good turnout for our first one, and one of the things I noticed is sitting out there in the dark, you can see the sky is amazing, the stars are amazing sitting out there. At the February 19th commission meeting, the commission approved by a 5-0 vote to pay $25 for a tribute page from the city commission and Margate residents to support the Alheimers Family Center dinner honoring Becky and Frank Tulley. After the meeting, we were notified that another option was available that we did not have at the time. It was a $150 full-page ad in the event program. The deadline for this option was extended to tomorrow afternoon. The ad is four inches by... Does everybody have this, or no? Okay, the ad is four inch, 4.5 inches by 7.5 inches, and would feature a photo of the city commissioners and wording showing support to the Alheimers Family Center, including honoring Becky and Frank Tulley. We could decide proceed with a $25 tribute page, the $150 full-page ad, or both. Does anybody want to make a recommendation for this?
Make a motion for the full-page ad.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Rich Popovich, 6066 Winfield Boulevard. I'm absolutely against government giving away money. I think you should give away your money. And I listened to you guys give it, talking about this the last time, and I've given a lot of money and worked, given a lot of money to this Allheimers Center, and, but we work for it, we can give it away. So I think what you should do, if you're going to give the taxpayers' money away, just forget your faces want anything, and you should have a big thing up there saying, "A wonderful donation from the taxpayers of Margate," since we're the ones who pay it. You're not. If you want to get your picture in there, take me home.
Okay, the ad Ashley reads, and I'll read it to you. "The residents and city commission of the City of Margate are proud to support the Alheimers Family Center and honorees Mayor Becky Tulley and Frank Tulley." The residents is the very first line of it. Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Talarico, aye. Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rosano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Mayor Pierman.
Yes.
Okay, so the attorney, you have anything? City clerk?
No, ma'am.
And, and thank you again for the, uh, work you guys did on the business letters. It was a really very, very good job. I've seen a lot of them, and a lot of people have said things, so...
My pleasure.
Thank you very much. Okay, and to the Chamber of Commerce, thank you very much for, uh, the tickets for the kids and the teachers, and that was, that was very much appreciated. Public discussion.
Norman Grant, 7416, August 18th Street, Home Springs 3, 345, holding units. I get up here first, because this is almost past my bedtime, so after I'll, I'll book, and then I'll be able to... First of all, I was here two weeks ago, and I was missing not, I had, I had a serious kind of a thing physically about a little over a month ago, and I just want to commend the fire rescue unit that transported me across my medical center. I had a lovely 5-day, 4-night vacation there. All my family was on a 5-day, 4-night vacation cruise, but I do want to commend the fire rescue units that came immediately. They ascertained the situation, that's a cop term, ascertaining, okay? And they took care of it, so I didn't mention it in the research, but I wanted to mention it. Also, today's Margate forum, two things are on the front page, I'd like to bring it to your attention if you haven't read it. First of all, I want to commend you for getting that over $400, something like $1,000 back from whatever you did with that baseball thing over there. It's on the front page of the forum today. You got the money back, and I want to commend you all for going after that money. Absolutely. The other thing on the front page called my... The city of Lorda Hill is going round and round about this developer. The name of the developer is AHS Development Corporation. Building high-rise multi-unit rental units. Seems like they're going back and forth to see whether they should have it or they shouldn't have it. I'm suggesting possibly that you guys do the CRA or whatever. I know you're doing a lot of stuff to see what we can get to this town and bring income into the town. You gave up on the Indians, but if you possibly get together with this development company, maybe you have already. They seem to be able to get some difficulty doing anything in Lorda Hill. Maybe you can make a shit of any connection with them, and maybe get something here where they can get income into the city through these rental units. And finally, this is, I know Artie Ross may be rest in peace, and Joe, makes the bring this up. I'll bring it up one last time. If possible, you're a volunteer guy? If possible, I know that BSO for years has had this cops law, citizens on patrol. From what I gather, very effective. You can look into it. I know years ago, the city seemed to be concerned about liability. I don't know if that's still viable, but maybe you may want to look into that to see if you can get that going here in the city of Margate. Find out whether it's been working with BSO and getting it going in the city. Again, thank you for that money, big time, and God bless the fire rescue unit. Thank you all very much.
Rick Riccardi, 4829 South Hemingway Circle, President of Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to update you that the carnival, it turns out we have a stage there that we decided that what we'll do is invite people to come and play while people are on the rides. So we actually got, it's not going to be a program where people come to hear the music, but they'll be, anybody who wants to come and showcase and do their thing, your people, whatever, they can come and just, we'll just put a slot out there sometime Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from noon till midnight. We'll just throw them up on that stage, and they'll do their thing. So that's something new that's just happened. So just let people know that they're invited to come up and do their act, okay?
Good evening. This is a joint effort. My name is Ashley, no, Sidney King. I'm the president of the Lions, there's 2111 Northwest 76th Avenue. Now, this is something that I think is really nice, and it's something for Margate. And we have a combined effort here with CERT, Welcome Home, Relay for Veterans, and the Lions. And we've combined because there is a need that veterans returning are finding it a little difficult to adjust to getting jobs, getting all kinds, to getting back into normal life. So we've got together. And, well, you all know what the Lions do. And we're supporting, and I want to introduce this, the chief planner of CERT. And I think you've heard enough from me. Come on, tell them a minute.
Eddie Christopher, 6600 Grandy One George South. We've got together with the Lions Club and a 501(c)(3) organization called Welcome Home Resumes. Now, what this organization does is creates an interactive resume online for our returning veterans to help them get back to gain to home point. So we've come together to help the Lions. Their building is in desperate need of repair. So our CERT team, I contacted Commissioner Donahue to get some volunteers. We're going to help them paint the building and fix it up so it's a viable use for the Lions. Plus, our Welcome Home Resumes organization will help our veterans. Now, if there's any other residents in the city that would like to come join us, we're going to be doing this on March 22nd at 9:00 a.m. And anybody has any questions, they can contact me at margatecert@gmail.com. We would greatly appreciate any kind of support from the city. Thank you very much.
Can we put their flyer in the elevator? Leave us one of your flyers, and we'll put it up in the elevator.
Okay, thank you.
Outside on the bulletin board, yeah. The website. Anything else we got that we got to throw at?
If you want, I can email it to you. You can put it on the website.
Email it to Joseph.
As you know, the Lions support and help any charity and anybody in distress that's got blind children. And thank you very much. This is something extra for Margate. Thank you. And anybody got any questions, by the way? Nothing's good.
Good evening. Joyce Bryan, 7005 Northwest 17th Street. Meeting mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. I'm here for Relay for Life. Relay for Life is April the 4th at 6:00 p.m. Monarch High School. But right now, I'd like to point out three things from Relay. We have a survivors' dinner that evening, and we'd like to make the announcement that we want all cancer survivors to please come. It's special. We have something special in mind for you this year. And surprise, I won't give it away. And please contact any one from Relay for Life. We also have a website. That's Relay for Life, Coconut Creek, Margate, in case everyone's not aware of it. You may call. You can look on the website for additional information. And maybe we can put that up too on our website. The second thing from Relay for Life. A lot of people don't know that people who aren't fighting cancer with chemotherapy or radiology need people to drive them. So we're looking for people to do that. There isn't protocol to go through. So if you're interested in helping out people to drive them for their treatments, radiology, chemotherapy, or doctor's business, please contact us also. And the final thing, we're starting something new this year. Luminario, which the mayor is very familiar with. It's bags that we commemorate people who have cancer. Instead of putting sand in it this year, we thought we'd do something different. Put a can in it, then those cans would be donated to our food banks in Coconut Creek and Margate. So what we started is initiated something with Margate Schools. We started that, and we're doing that collection in the schools. But perhaps maybe the city hall could have a box also for the canned goods. Something you could think about. I don't know if it's feasible or not. We would pick them up and pick, Eddie's here because he's also only committee member. And finally, oh, by the way, I didn't say, the food will go back to the different churches and community groups that have canned goods. So it's not just canned goods are going to be there. We're going to recycle them back into the community for the food banks. So Relay for Life, April the 4th, Monarch High School. Please see if you need any additional information.
Also, don't forget, if you don't have a team yet, you can contact anyone on the Relay for Life committee to set up your own teams.
No, I was going to see about putting a container or something for the cans or some, somewhat usually.
Sure, let's check in how we've done that for other groups.
Yeah, get with the assistant city manager Monday maybe. Give him some time to look it up. Commissioner Talarico.
Yes, I know in the past, we had, we did have some teams at different departments. We had a liaison person for the city. We still have any of that, or what's going on with that?
We are partnering with it. I do know that the city clerk's office has a team. I will have a team there because I want to scoop outside. Commissioner Donahue's band, I think, has a team. You can join any one of those teams. You can join mine, because right now I'm the only member. But I have a new tent, so.
I wonder if we're going to do the same thing when we get to the pound.
Yeah, I don't know. Does HR have a team? Joseph, you know?
As of today, they have taken out a team yet.
I don't need to shake that. What about finance? Does finance have a team? Yeah, I still agree with that.
I believe they merged with the city clerks.
Oh, they merged with the city clerk's team? What cheesy bunch. Okay, but public works?
Of course, we have one of the clerk's team also, Margate and Waters.
It's a big thing. It's a big thing.
Do you have a few people from public works who are on the Margate and Waters?
Fire department? Police department? Oh, man. Anybody feeling guilty over there yet?
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, but we will represent. Margate will represent. We always represent, and we will represent some way, shape, or form again.
Good evening. Resident of Margate, Rich Hallianello, 7631 Northwest 23rd Street. Boy, you have bright lighting. It's like you need sunglasses. Frank, this is where you belong. Oh, by the way, you did a good job with the presentations today. Just a point of information. I don't want to open up a whole big discussion, but I just want to clarify something with boats. Are we allowed to put a boat alongside of your house on the grass? Permissible or not? I remember it used to be where you had to have a driveway or a support or something, but just point of information, just clarify that. Because we leave a boat on the grass, grass grows, nobody takes care of it. I don't know how that is, but maybe later. The attorney is getting ready to answer my question. I appreciate that very much.
You're going to have the attorney or the city manager, assistant city manager? You want to have the planning delivered?
Well, I think Ben's getting a couple of votes.
Yeah, I can be a short answer.
Good evening. Ben Zissel, Director of Economic Development. The current code requires any boat that is parked in front of the front facade of the structure to be on a paved, permitted surface. If it is behind the front facade, either outside of the house or in the rear, it is not meant to be on a paved surface.
Commissioner Rizano.
Ken, one quick question. Here's a limit to the footage you can have, is that correct? Ken, what is it, 25 feet?
26.
26 feet. 26, ready? That's something that maybe we can discuss one day, because I mean, if you couldn't afford a 35-foot boat and it's parked legally, why discourage a person from having a boat in the city?
Do you want to direct the city assistant city manager to have staff look into that?
Yeah, I would like to. Take care.
Thanks. Done. Commissioner Talarico.
What's the limit on motorhomes? Same or larger?
35 feet, isn't it? Look into both.
Looking at both. Can I add one thing to come? Can I add one thing to come?
Yeah.
He said it's allowed to have it on side of the house left, on the grass.
Permitted. It's going to be parked on a permitted.
In front of the facade.
Great.
In front of the facade of the house, you have to have it on a paved structure.
Side of the house, you don't.
Side of the house, you do not. It can be parked on the grass.
I make a comment about that. That's ridiculous. If it's left there from a certain length of time, they don't cut the grass. The grass grows, and it looks like a nice saw later on.
Why doesn't he call code and tell them that their grass is not being cut? Okay, anyone else?
You better read up on your codes. I don't think you know what you're talking about.
Having said that, I'd like to know if the issue that Mr. Rizano was going to be sent to you for by you people, that's all he came up for a vote, hasn't it? That's all he's been taking care of.
That's been done and over.
Yeah. See, and the reason why I'm bringing that up is because I know that there's an ethics complaint filed against him. He has to deal with that. And I'm like, okay, why is there any complaint filed against this guy? And it turns out that the person who filed this complaint is a sneaky guy. He went on his Facebook page, was downloading pictures, had superimposing them all at places, and there's some mean people out there. I know. I've had this experience myself, people going on my Facebook page and causing me all kinds of problems. And I know other people have had the same thing happen to them. And it all comes from one place up on this dice, and we all know where that's coming from. And I'd like to say that I noticed that in the Sun Sentinel, they had a article in the paper where they said that bosses aren't permitted to go on a Facebook page or personal page of anybody that's working for them to spy on them and look for things that are harming them about. And I think that this governing body here should look into that so we can stop commissioners here from going on people's Facebook pages or having other people go on their pages and then causing them all kinds of trouble and problems. Yeah. Yeah, well, you know. So everybody thinks that that's not an issue until you get thrown in a bus, and what happened to me was kind of giggle, giggle, wiggle, because it's Popovich. But I notice when everybody else gets thrown under the bus about it, it's not as funny anymore.
First of all, Facebook has settings that it all takes us to click, and you can make your Facebook page private to anyone you want. If you choose not to make your Facebook page, it is a public page, and anyone can go on it. Now, there are people out there that are IT smart and IT equipped, including the one that you're talking about, who can go on anybody's Facebook page and figure out how to get anybody's pictures off of them. It has nothing to do with this commission. We dealt with the issue. It's over. It's done. However, what you don't understand about Broward County Ethics is anyone can file an ethics complaint against any elected official anonymously or not anonymously. And they will decide if they're going to do it or not. Has nothing to do with us. We've dealt with it. We governed ourselves. As far as we're concerned up here, it's over. If it's not over for you, then deal with it. Consent agenda. Wish the commission?
Simone to approve.
Second.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Talarico. Aye. Commissioner Donahue.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Simone.
Yes.
Yes. City managers report. Assistant city managers report.
Thank you, mayor and commissioner. Just one item for you this evening, as you may have seen in an email sent to private city manager later today. The City of Margate is now tweeting on Twitter. We have an account set up. The, this account will be useful for us as we establish a base of followers as this site works that way, that we can quickly get out just short bits of information, event reminders and things of that nature, even direct people back to the city website for more information. Just a good way to start branching into the social media world with this particular tool that we'll be able to use to just get out city information in another format. And anybody that's interested in following the City of Margate, our address is @cityofmargatefl. Those are all lowercase letters, all combined, but you can probably find it just by searching City of Margate as well. And again, that was @cityofmargatefl.
Thank you. And I was just at a mayor's conference where we talked about trying to reach the millennial people, which are people that are born after 1980. And if it can be done on a smartphone, they want their information fast and everything else like that. I'm going to caution the commission at the moment, if you have a Twitter account to, before you go and follow Margate, wait until the city clerk's office checks on a few things. There may be some ethics things and some public records issues. So before you go and start following Margate, City of Margate, wait until the city clerk's office lets us know what's involved in all that. Okay, thank you very much. All right, resolutions.
6A, the resolution of the City of Margate Florida approving an agreement with Management Partners, Inc. to facilitate a strategic planning pro-